Brookshire, Texas will hold a special session for a budget workshop on August twenty, twenty twenty-five at seven P. M. in the city council chambers for the purpose of considering the following. All right, can we have prayer?
Heavenly Father, once again, we'd just like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here tonight, Lord. Lord, we ask that you continue blessing this city. We ask that you continue to bless each and every member of this city, where that you be with the board members all tonight, Lord. Lord, as we bring our minds and hearts together all tonight, God, to come together to make decisions upon this city. We ask that the decisions, decisions not only be pleasing upon you, but be for the betterment of this city. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next religion is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Corner, roll call.
Mayor Richards.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Taylor, here. Alderman Stamps.
Present.
Alderwoman McDay.
Present.
Mayor, you do have a call.
Okay. New business, discussion review the proposed budget for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year. So, the previous two budget meetings were, we were basically gathering data. This particular meeting, I'm going to go through the entire budget. We have all of the data we need now, so I'm going to go through the entire budget. I do have a presentation there on the screen that gives an overview of what you have in your book list right now. It explains all of the, uh, all our financial situation, status. Okay, Ms. Glover. First screen you see here on your screen are some of the problems that we encountered with this, uh, year and up to now. Financial system change in twenty twenty-three from N-code to Fundview, which presented challenges. N-code was a more user-friendly municipality system that a lot of municipalities use. Very simple, uh, not many, not a lot of account numbers. Fundview have many, many account numbers and sort of cumbersome. The, some of the data in Fundview can be manipulated, the data in N-code, solid data. So, uh, moving from one financial system to another created some challenges. Account codes mapping were incorrectly. So, when Fundview was implemented, there was not a business practice put in place to map the account codes and the items that are being purchased to the correct accounts. So, when you purchase item, you're supposed to actually go onto that invoice and label that particular item. Maintenance parts, everyday usage parts with specific accounts. So, the mapping made things incorrectly coded to the wrong buckets in some cases. The majority of the payments were paid from the general fund bowl, meaning that there are specific account numbers that are designated for certain account types. And so, the practice was to, uh, use the general fund just to pay the bill and not map from the correct account. That's understood, right? And that created a problem, that created a problem. Many payments were set up on automatic draft with no invoices to be verified. So, that means that, uh, for instance, uh, our mosquito spray, our vehicle lease, they're being paid automatically out of the account every month. Different payments were being done this way, so we were not able to retrieve an invoice to even code it. And so, that automatic payment process created problems. We have discontinued a lot of the automatic payments, so we can now get invoices in to make sure things are mapped to the correct accounts. Okay, bank reconciliations, issues due to not using proper line items. That created a problem for us as well, we have to reconcile the financial system to the bank. And by not reconciling or having a company that was inattentive to what they were doing in some cases and not doing anything in some cases, created a problem. We have corrected that, we have now hired a comp, a company that has auditing experience. They ha, they have, also have N-code experience, and they also have Fundview experience. So, they will help us with our past due audits and also with banking reconciliation moving forward. Audit's not complete for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four. When the financial system was changed, no business practice put in place, it created an audit issue. And that audi, audit issue went from year to year to year. And now, we are actively trying to get the audits caught up. And with this new bank reconciliation company and our staff, we will be able to get these, we're actively make, getting caught up on the audits. Uh, city operating, uh, out of two banks. We were operating out of New First Bank and also out of Wells Fargo Bank. We had money in both of those banks, which cre, also created a problem. We are keeping some, our primary bank is New First, but we are keeping some amount of money in Wells Fargo until our bank reconciliation process is completed. We verify with the orders that we can close Wells Fargo, but again, we're keeping Wells Fargo open with a minimum amount until our bank reconciliations are caught up. Next slide, please. The current available funds that the city has right now in the bank. Current bank account is thirteen million, thirty-five thousand, eight forty-four, nine nine. Techspool account, one sixty-seven, seven nine nine, and our Techstar account, two thirty-five, eighty-seven. The Techspool and the Techstar accounts are those, uh, contingency fund accounts. We will, at some point, decide how much money we will start funding these two accounts with again, to make sure that we do have contingency money if needed. So, that's those assessments of the Southwest, one hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Of course, y'all know we're moving to a new, uh, taxing, uh, company, Walla County, that's going to be handling our taxes for us. So, assessment of Southwest will go away. We, we're going to move that money over, is that correct, Ms. Corner?
Yes. Well, uh, Walla County, uh, tax assessment usually sends checks, so we have to, uh, change one of our New First accounts to say tax account, as it should have already been saying, tax account, and those checks will be deposited to the New First Bank account, tax account.
Right, but before the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, taxes will go on.
It was just going in the general fund.
Right.
Well, assessment of Southwest was wiring our tax money to New First General.
General fund. But now, we'll go into the correct account. Next slide. Projected revenue for FY twenty-six, it's a grand total of eleven million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. And that's not including EDC, uh, funds. We have no bond debt, the city of Brookshire has no debt, no bond debt. FY twenty-six proposed capital projects and operating expenses. We will talk about a little bit of the details on the capital project, projects a little later. But, capital projects cost, one million, three sixty-four, three ten. Our operating expenses per year is eight million, one thirty-five, seventy-four, which leaves us a grand total of nine million, four ninety-four, eighty-four. So, uh, that's kind of where we, where we're sitting at right there with project costs and operating expenses combined. Our grand total revenue is eleven million, seven twenty-seven, four eleven. Our grand total capital operating, of course, is nine million, four ninety-four, eight eight four. And if you subtract our operating and capital from our revenue, at the end of the year, we should have two million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five twenty-seven, not including what's in the bank. This is operating without touching the money in the bank, right? Next slide. Economic Development Corporation information. The EDC projected, projected, uh, sales tax is one million, two forty-eight, five five eight. The bank balance is two million, seven eighty-nine, seven twenty-seven. The total sales tax and bank balance, four million, thirty-eight thousand, two eighty-five. Our projected projects for EDC, two million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred. The sales tax and bank balance projected projects, after we subtract our projected projects from what we, from our sales tax and bank balance, the EDC at the end of the year should have one million, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Our projected operating expenses, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, one oh seven, and this is operating expenses for EDC. The projected operating expenses minus the projected bank balance and sales tax will leave a remaining balance after our operating expenses are subtracted, one million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven seventy-eight dollars. Wages, total wages for all employees per year, four million, four hundred, four million, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, two hundred and sixty-one. Council pay increase, proposed is twenty thousand, four hundred dollars. The judge for the court asked for a raise. We, uh, decided to, he presented a specific dollar amount. We met him halfway. We increasing the pay for the judge, seven hundred, eighteen dollars and twenty-five cent, plus a three percent, not thirty, three percent, uh, increase over what the judge was making last year, not thirty, three percent. The employees, uh, we, the council agreed that employees would get a three percent cola for FY twenty-six. They also agreed that the, uh, employees would get a five percent merit pool. We're asking for one new administration, administrative position. This position, as we explained in our other two budget meetings, will be to help out at the front counter. We're going to remove one person that's doing permits, because we, of all the development that's here in town is coming our way. Our permit activity has picked up greatly. And so, we're going to remove the permit clerk and reassign that person to do permits permanently. Permit, uh, permanently permits, a few other things. So, that's what that position's for. The Police Department jail discussion. We've discovered, uh, recently that our jail is not operational. Our jail, uh, right now is being, had all the evidence room items moved to the jail. The evidence room is being remodeled, excuse me, the evidence room is being remodeled. So, therefore, the jail was a place to move the evidence, and it was done in the correct fashion. Correct, uh, Captain Miller. Okay, so, we need to have a discussion about the jail. Because, do we want, uh, I think, a holding jail? For a holding tank, or do we want a fully operational jail? A holding tank will require, uh, inmates to be held there for not more, not twenty-four hours, but for a few hours, and then be transported to Walla County. A fully operational jail will require a jailer. It will require, that means that the inmate will stay there twenty-four hours. And therefore, the inmate will have to be fed and also monitored, and all of the things that it takes to run a, a jail operation. And so, I wanted to, uh, we did add money into our forfeiture accounts, which is in your book, to, uh, remodel, finish out the evidence room. We did add funds in cap, in the forfeiture account for that, to finish out the evidence room. And we did, if you all decide, added money in to operate a fully functioning jail, if you all decide, to council police. That's the decision that we need to make as far as the jail is concerned. Also, for the Police Department, uh, we're asking for two, uh, police vehicles, pursuit vehicles that have reached their useful life to be, uh, replaced, to be replaced. We also asking for, we've received requests from the Police Department to do some benchmarking, to decide if we want to outsource the new hiring background checks for new hires. That process takes, it takes a lot of work to get, check all the references and also wait for all that information to come back, depending on how many places the person worked and how many places the person applied to. And sometimes, that process can take up to two months, uh, for new hire. And so, the next, uh, item on there, Public Works Direct and EDC Consultant Duties Combined, that saved the city around sixty-eight thousand dollars per year. Uh, Community Relations and Social Media Duties Combined save the city around twenty-nine thousand per li, per year. And also, uh, if the council police, we're asking that we eliminate the new hire police officer hiring incentive pay, will save the city seventy-eight thousand per year. We've had this program in place for quite a while, and we still experience, you know, turnover with this program. So, although it has been effective in, uh, attracting officers, we've not retained any, uh, enough. So, that's kind of what the overview of the budget and process. So, now, if you all go to your book, we have y'all some really nice tabs this time. Should be happy for that, I am. You see the agenda there, uh, total revenue expenses, general fund, economic development funds, capital outline project, employees' salaries, benefits, proposed tax rate. Uh, Ms. Corner has the truth and taxation document and the budget and tax rate timeline she's have there. And since we did the budget overview on the screen there, we'll hit some highlights, uh, in this area. If you look at the first document, it's a summary. It will let you all know that we determined the budget, uh, proposed budget by our actual usage from twenty-five for nine months, from October to June, multiplied times twelve. And that gave us a proposed budget and also, uh, our projects. So, that's the summary sheet that you have there, that you all have there. If you all go to, uh, general fund, as I mentioned, uh, on the screen, I gave you all a, uh, list of our revenue. And that was add the lower tax, property tax, there was sales tax, and also it said miscellaneous. And the miscellaneous on this, uh, general fund, uh, some examples of that is our mixed beverage tax, franchise payments, license and permit fees, health permits, COVID revenue, building permits, and municipal court fines. That is the miscellaneous revenue that we get, the city get every year, along with add the lower and sales tax. Okay? So, as a general fund, does anyone have any questions on the general fund? Okay, okay. Next tab, court. Of course, I've already mentioned the rate increase for the judge in court. Also mentioned a pool, merit pool, and, uh, cola for the employees. And the other, the court budget is pretty simple. There it is there.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I think we should give the prosecutor an increase as well, but I, I don't see her on the list.
The prosecutor.
She's, uh, she's right up on the court salary.
No, I'm talking about on this list.
On this one?
Yeah, she's contract employee, contract employee, yeah. But, I mean, we, I can make a note that we want to give the prosecutor a raise as well. Want to give three percent?
Yes, sir.
Three percent. You had it, Ms. Glover? Okay, is everybody in agreement with that? Ms. McDay, you in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, prosecutor, three percent. All right, next tab, you see yellow right there is admin. Admin salaries, uh, which is tied up in the eight million dollars per year that I'd mentioned on the screen there for all of the employees. Again, as a reminder, the account codes that you all see that are in white are the ones that are going away, correct, Ms. Knodley, the white ones are going away?
It's stained, blue is.
The blue ones are going away.
Yes.
And they're going to be, uh, combined so that we can match, uh, N-code nine, N-code ten, is which we decided to go to N-code ten. So, we're operating in that fashion moving forward, as though we are going to go N-code ten, and we're combining these account numbers to make sure we can transition over to N-code ten in the correct fashion. So, there, there's your admin. Then we move to Public Works. Next tab. Now, remember, when we get to the back of this book, we will go over all of the capital projects that we talked about in the first two meetings. Right now, you're just only going through each department operating budget right now. So, Public Works. Everything's good there. Any questions on Public Works? If you notice on Public Works, the capital outline, that's where all your capital, your capital dollars are for the projects in the capital outline on the second page. PD, Police Department. As we discussed, uh, in the operating budget, there's money in the operating budget for, um, the evidence room, to, to finish the evidence room. There's money in there for that. And you'll see that on the third page, down in capital facilities. Okay, any questions on Police Department? Questions? There's the court. Now, if you go to Hotel Motel, past that green page, green tab, Hotel Motel, you'll notice that the festivals that previously was approved by council are there at the bottom. Christmas Festival. We have Fourth of July, National Night Out, MLK, Cinco de Mayo, and Juneteenth. And we also, uh, added some dollars in case we decide to approve veterans, some type of veterans participation for this year. And at the top of the page, you'll see the dollar amounts that's in there for Hotel Motel Fund, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four ninety-five. Debt Services Account. Capital Projects, if you go all down, down to State Forfeits, the orange tab, this is the account that we placed dollars in here for jail. For, yeah. And then, the green tab is our tax account that we mentioned earlier, that our tax money should be in this account. But, of course, again, it was being funded from assessment of Southwest into the general fund. It should have been placed in this account, our tax account. The purple tab is, Mr. Green had inquired the last couple of meetings about Techspool and Techstar. I covered that on our summary page, on our, on my, uh, budget information presentation. And there's the documentation for the account for Techspool and Techstar. Any questions on that so far? Okay, your next tab, you'll see Economic Development Proposed Budget. So, uh, Economic Development, the per, the, uh, projected revenue for Economic Development that I've mentioned on the presentation, we have that, and we also have carryover from FY twenty-four, because there were not any projects done with Economic Development. So, there was over a million dollars carryover for FY twenty-four. And that's why Economic Development have about almost over two million dollars, two million dollars in the bank that they can work with this year. Yeah. So, there's all the salaries and expenses for Economic Development, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, for Economic Development. Now, you get to the, the next tab, you'll see the capital outline and projects, which will be the spreadsheet. That spreadsheet is what we talked about in the first two meetings and discussed, one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. I can tell y'all that there's some items on this list that we are prioritizing, and it's going to be road repairs. We're going to have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for road repairs from the city and five hundred thousand dollars for road repairs from EDC. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of road repairs. And that's going to be, uh, additional roads, different from what we have for, right now, for our opera project, which has already been awarded to a vendor. And that is nine roads that are going to be, uh, major patchwork done to them. And with this dollar amount, we should do about thirteen, maybe thirteen, nine to thirteen additional roads. So, that's going to be moving around really good. And then, we have two hundred and six thousand dollars in for drainage that we'll go out and dig out some ditches and help the water flow. that we'll go out and dig out some ditches and help the water flow. Of course, y'all know we also have the uh Midmore Project that is uh going up back to environmental uh and then should be going out for beds really soon. And that's gonna be three roads that are going to be, have coats replaced and ditches dug out. And so this additional drainage money should help additional drainage, right? Okay? And so I wanted to point that out on this uh capital project list here that we all approved and talked about in our first two meetings. Does anybody have any, any comments on capital projects?
Sounds good, everything we need.
Okay, EDC projects be your next tab. We have several projects on here, downtown improvements, uh, the amphitheater sign, landscape for City Hall, different things like that, road work, drainage work on EDC, bathrooms for the amphitheater area, amphitheater across the street. The bricks, the brick project. This is a total amount of two million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Any questions? On EDC projects? Okay, Public Works Equipment Requests for FY twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, they're requesting uh about fifty thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars worth of equipment uh to help better the working environment at the public workshop. A car lift, an air compressor, hybo- hydraulic boom sweeper, grapple rake, things of that, of that nature. Any questions? There's all the backup for Public Works Equipment. We get into our wages, which we talked about in the opening presentation. Bottom number for wages per year, four million, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars for all wages. This includes cola, this includes a cola, right? And then there's council increase. And there's some additional information that I would like to share. Uh, TURs for Crystal Lakes are two years behind. The TURs, the TURs for Crystal Lakes are two years behind. They were not paid. There are around two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars per year that we pay for Crystal Lake TURs. So right now, we owe the TURs payment of half a million dollars, roughly half a million dollars. Just so you all know that. And I'll talk a little bit about the exempt and non-exempt employee status since we're on wages right now. So we have uh two statuses of, three statuses of employees at the city. One is exempt employees, which are typically uh supervisors, uh executive staff that exempt, that are labeled as exempt, based on the criteria that's uh from the state of Texas that on the second sheet specifies the pay rate for an exempt employee and non-exempt employee. Exempt says Texas, the minimum tariff on an employee to be considered exempt from overtime pay is six eighty-four per week, thirty-five thousand, five sixty-eight annually. But we get to set the number, okay? This is just a guide from the state. So typically, uh corporate, in the corporate standard, uh, is for management, department heads exempt. We have a list from the city that shows all the employees and their status. As I mentioned, there are three types of statuses here, non-exempt, exempt, and then we have contract employees. And so on that list, you have the names and the statuses of the employees that are exempt and non-exempt. And the exempt employees are not eligible for overtime. But on occasion, at supervisor discretion, can be offered comp time. For instance, if they're at this meeting right now, after hours, we can offer them comp time. And if employees that are uh non-exempt at this meeting, it's overtime. So I'll take a minute for y'all to review that list. Are there any questions?
It used to be just comp time. And if approved, um, and I'm talking about regular employees, if approved, then they would get overtime.
Well, our personnel policy, and this has been uh a discussion that I think we've had in the past in some of our council meetings, concern our post-personnel policy. So uh initially, before we made a change, there was no overtime here. Employees would get comp time if they worked over, they would get comp time. And then we discovered that it's sometimes, on occasion, employees have to work overtime and get the comp time. And when they cash it out, they cash it out at time and a half. They'll cash the comp time out at time and a half. So to prevent the confusion of that, we as a council decided to implement an overtime budget and to allow the employees, the non-exempt employees, to work overtime. And the exempt employees to be on occasion, allow comp time at the discretion of a supervisor. So we changed the policy for comp time and overtime. And we learned also that, uh, especially in our police department, because they worked a different shift, that they occasionally definitely had to work overtime. And then they would go and they would bank some of that comp time, or then they would cash some of it out at time and a half. And so we had a double jeopardy thing going on here. And that was the reason why we implemented an overtime budget at PD, to allow them to work overtime. So that's kind of how I remember things happen here at council. But again, you know, it's at our discretion to change it. If you like, we can uh review the uh personnel policy and decide. But I can tell you that employees do work overtime. And so what is your catalyst for paying them when they work overtime, time and a half? It can't be through comp time, unless you're gonna give them comp time and a half. They'll have to have time and a half, and that was the reason we implemented overtime.
I just want clarification.
Yeah. So now, we have Ms. Corner's truth in taxation presentation.
Okay, so um, the truth in taxation is supposed to be prepared, be prepared by the tax assessor or the tax collector. Um, we were having some discrepancies with AS, Assessment of Southwest, saying that since we had sent them a letter of a thirty-day notice, that first they were saying they weren't gonna do it. So then, the county doesn't offer that particular thing, they just collect our taxes. They're not gonna do the truth in taxation, they never did, that was never part of their arrangement. So we always knew that, that's why we always had someone else to do it in the past. So, me. I actually took a class with Lombarder, truth in taxation, and got some things accomplished and learned a little bit, probably myself for that. But um Assessment, Assessment of Southwest, once I got on the phone and Ms. Lyons emailed them and I told them, we have thirty days until our contract is up. You need to complete this truth in taxation within this thirty days because it has to be signed off by a tax collector, uh, tax assessor. I'm a tax collector, but I'm not a tax assessor. So it has to be signed off by them. So those actual truth numbers, she, she told me would be by thir- yeah, the end of this week, Thursday, Friday. So now they're doing what they're supposed to do, so. But um, as far as looking at the numbers with the class that I, the study I did with Lombarder, um, the mayor is requesting no increase in the taxes, and it looks like it's gonna be fine with no issue. So, but once I get those truth numbers, I'll definitely let y'all know for sure. But it won't be an increase at his discretion.
All right, so I think we have a schedule as well?
Yes. So this week, um, I put a timeline at the back, if you go to the back of the budget and tax rate timeline. Every city has to do this when they're doing their taxes, every district, every municipality, they, they have to do this. You have to set a timeline. The ma- the mayor has to present, once he has these workshops with his council and everything, his proposed budget is okay in his eyes, he's gonna present it to me and my clock starts. And as of now, if you see these dates, that's the, that's when the, the dates are gonna be for the hearings, the publishing in the paper and everything. So I already have those dates done. Um, you might see where the same date you have the hearing is the same date you're gonna vote on it. And that'll be that, it'll be a hearing on the agenda at the beginning, and then you'll vote on it in the same meeting. That way, because the way our newspaper runs is if I get it to them that Friday, it'll be in the paper for that Wednesday. And we have to have ten days between it being posted in the paper and on the websites. So that's why, that's how my days came about. And I, and instead of extra meetings, we're gonna do the hearings on the same day as the
Any questions? All right, that concludes the third budget meeting.
Also in the back, council, it's uh the holidays, the uh calendar holidays for the city closure. So if you can review those and get back with me and if we need to change those dates or correct them in any way, let me know, and then I'll make sure that it's uh approved and published for the public to see. When the budget is approved.
Thank y'all for coming. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All that favor?